Barb, do you want to go ahead and take the roll call? Welcome to the Monday, September 22, 2025 City of Clayton Planning Commission.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Muncie? Mr. Bills?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett? And Ms. Williams?
Here.
Okay, brilliant. Tonight, since we don't have any cases in front of us, this is more of a kind of a discussion. I think that Ellen is going to tee up for us. That has come, the city council has asked the planning commission to look at the potential use of residential zoning classification under Plan Clayton. That's really, so there's no active cases here, so I don't have to go through the nuts and bolts of the meeting. But I did want to ask Ms. Bustos, did you want to speak tonight? Because if so, I could swear you in. Okay? Yeah, so if you just raise your right hand. Just go ahead and state your name. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemn swear?
Sow my swear.
To tell the whole truth?
Tell the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, thank you. The next item, we have approval of the meeting minutes of August 25, 2025. I think Ellen sent those out. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, thanks Barb. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on that. Old business, we have none, but under new business, I guess Ellen will go ahead and ask you to kind of give us some context around the discussion tonight.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is case number PC 2506, a consideration of residential zoning districts. Council direction, residential zoning districts review. City council directed Planning Commission to consider... Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and recess, just because it's a good point. I mean, if he's close, we could wait for him.
Yeah, let's make a quick motion to recess.
Okay, all right.
I'm moved that we go into a short recess.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
He said to give him about 15 minutes, and he'll be here.
Okay, so I think what we do need is a motion to come out of adjournment. Recession, thank you.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Derek's here. Ellen, we'll go ahead and start with the new business item. And then Barb, can you remind me that we need to approve those minutes? Yep, okay, good, all right.
Good evening, Council. Planning Commission, sorry. Case number PC 2506, consideration of residential zoning districts. Council direction, residential zoning districts review. City council directed Planning Commission to consider the restoration of residential zoning districts and make a report back to City Council on it. Consultant discussion, McBride Dale Clarion, or MDC. Planning staff discussed the topic with MDC and what information will be necessary to present to Planning Commission. MDC agreed to the preparation of a memo reviewing Plan Clayton, summarizing the latest planning and zoning code updates, and presenting options for how to proceed with residential district revisions. Memo outline, residential zoning districts. Plan Clayton overview, why was Plan Clayton necessary? Timeline and engagement, primary land use changes. Planning and zoning code update summary, which residential districts were changed? Map comparison, high-level changes, and options to proceed draft. Reintroduce old zoning districts, keep it the same, make minor changes. MDC recommends looking at not only how a reintroduction of the old districts would work, but also other options. Questions and comments? Planning Commission members are encouraged to ask questions, request clarification, and give input on the information presented. And project timeline? MDC will deliver the residential zoning memo for Planning Commission review before the next regular meeting. Discussion and feedback will help the Planning Commission recommend a preferred path forward to council. And helpful links, which I shared via email with you all ahead of the meeting, was the Clayton City Council meeting. This directive was given around the 1 hour and 30 minute mark. Plan Clayton implementation plan, Plan Clayton Implementation Committee final report to council, Plan Clayton comprehensive land use plan, Plan Clayton appendix, and the Plan Clayton itself website. The site has the meeting videos from January 13, 2021, to June 16, 2021, when Plan Clayton was thought of and thought through.
So, just to restate, so that the memo that you outlined would be worked on so that by the time we came back in October, we could use that as a discussion guide?
Correct. We're looking for a little bit more guidance about what option you would want to take forward. So, MDC put together three kind of vague options there. Reintroduce old zoning districts, keep it the same, or make minor changes.
Any comments, questions? Derek, do you want to just start with any thoughts?
Yeah, so I'll kind of tell you how this was at least planted. I think there were some council meetings, and myself, speaking as a resident, made a comment that, you know, if you're not happy with the way that the property is owned, then we should change the district. And that prompted a question from another resident. You know, we had all these other lower-density residential districts. What happened to them? And I said, well, I think my first vote on Planning Commission was a blanket approval of new. It was either that, or even before then. Some new zoning regulations, I think that might have included that change from R1, R2, R3 to just RSD. And RSD being, I think, 60-foot lot frontage, and, you know, density requirements that are in the current zoning code. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, and only two or three things have come to mind. One would be, you know, something that is way outside of our hands and control, especially as a city or the, you know, Planning Commission. That would be like land trust and things like that. That's one way to preserve ground. Another way would be changing the zoning districts to require higher-density zoning. And given my background, what I want to be able to do is to prevent referendums and lawsuits when somebody purchases a property and they think they're going to be able to use it as they purchased it. And then we come in front of planning and it gets approved, and it goes to City Council, and there's a big war over it and ballot initiatives. You know, we wouldn't know anything about that here. So if there's a way to give a developer, a property owner legitimate expectations when they purchase that property, or they don't purchase the property because they know it's not going to get rezoned, that would be my, I guess, my goal, my thought. I think maybe it's good to maybe look at the old... I guess one thing maybe to talk about before is, why would it be changed from the 1, 2, 3 to the RSD? And I think that's probably more of a simplification tool so that we're not giving developers three different plans or hoops to jump through. I think that's probably a trend in most cities, is to simplify the zoning code. But, you know, as we're aware, this place is usually full, and everyone's usually wagging their finger at us. And so if we want tools to do something about, you know, how we talk to a developer when they come in and say, we want to put X number of houses with 50-foot lot frontage on its already-zoned RSD, why can't we do that? Then we need to put something in the zoning code that can say why we can't do that, so they don't come to us in the first place. But I do think that the interests have to be balanced. I think it's probably more of something new, not necessarily something old. Maybe we can use the old ones to base it on. But I think what's probably more important for me is designating certain areas to say, okay, here's a missing tooth. There's development all around here. It makes sense to put it here, it makes sense to put it here. Because one of the topics that I think a developer brought up is the urban sprawl issue, or the, you know, clustered developments. I don't think anybody wants that. I think that's a bad plan. So, those two elements would probably be things I would like to include. One would be reducing urban sprawl and identifying missing teeth, gaps in development. And then maybe a new option based on the R2 and R3 prior zoning classifications. So, 2 instead of 3 or 4. Because I think we just have one residential now.
Ellen, if I'm understanding this correctly, this memo that we have outlined here is what MDC... what are they called, MDC?
MDC, yes.
MDC is going to provide us with, is that correct?
Correct. Once we have a more clear path forward about what we're thinking, you know, what can we do to help with Council's directive? That's when MDC would dive into, you know, either reintroducing old zoning districts and starting down one of these paths to see, you know, where the discussion leads us. Obviously, you guys don't have to be tied to a decision once you make it. So if you decide we want to do something new, and then we start exploring that option, and it becomes, you know, not something that we intended to do or something, you guys can always change that discussion. This is a matter that is in your guys' hands, so you can table it, vote on it, move forward with it for as long as you need.
So, since Plan Clayton was just put in place a few short years ago, is it safe to say that we are now seeing the evidence of that plan that was put into place, and maybe some fallout from it?
It is possible. It's definitely a good indicator when council gives you directive to reevaluate residential zoning districts, but then it becomes in your hands. So if you interpret it that way, that's what it is.
Okay. And so we have had lately several developers come wanting to put new housing developments in Clayton. For the maps that we have, would it make sense for us to identify those locations where it makes sense to put new developments? As opposed to waiting for a developer to come and say, we want to develop here?
One thought that I had is that, it's my understanding that the city spent a lot of time and effort in collecting data. And every time we bring that issue up, residents will say, oh, no, 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 no. Or some folks will say, no one talked to me. We do have data, and I think Dan was on the Implementation Committee. I think you were as well. So there's tons of data, and there's plenty of property identified as this should be a city center, this should be that. I'm wondering if there's a way that MDC can use that data to say, okay, we hear you. Maybe we want to use that data that we already have so we don't have to go do that again, another survey, and say, okay, this area, you know, we should maybe consider an R2, 3, 1.5, however we want to call it designation, with, you know, slightly larger lot sizes or slightly more frontage requirements or more acreage, something like that. So we already have that. I think we already have a good sample of that information because I think some of the things that were relevant during our discussions for the Implementation Committee were things like filling in the gaps. Rural preservation was definitely on there, but also, you know, meeting the needs of the community. And I think MDC will know, you know, what type of stresses a small city is going to have in developing. So, you know, if they come back and they say, okay, based on all that data we have from the Plan Clayton, and based on kind of what we're hearing you say, here's a few spots where we think we want higher density. Here's a few spots where we think we might want lower density. That's even another thing I was thinking about, is do we want an even higher-density zoning than the RSD allows? Like to actually really designate, say, this place can do everything RSD can do, plus it could have apartments, or something like that. Because I don't think our zoning code really points that. And just to give another option, or another tool in our toolbox to say, they bought the property, they can do what they want. They bought the property knowing the zoning, here's what the zoning says. That's it.
You know, that's interesting. That was a good question. And Derek, too, on that note, too, I think of that North Main corridor. And, I mean, there's some... I mean, some of the ownership of those parcels are not easy. But, you know, for example, Montgomery County has got a big footprint in front of the Stillwater Center. That, and I know this, I know in past years, city staff has kind of looked at that to see if there's any opportunity to work with them to redevelop that. But, you know, maybe that, maybe to your point about saying, hey, in these, in a place like that, if Montgomery County and the city could ever work out a deal where there could be a development there, if Montgomery County doesn't need all those acres, you know, could we, you know, could we kind of make an extra special effort to make that more dense? Because it's on a bus line. It's close to the grocery, you know, it's for all the right reasons, right? I would say this, too. Ellen, if we could go heavy on maps in October... Maps help me. And I, you know, I looked at the future land use plan map on the website, and I... It just helps visually to kind of see that stuff.
I agree.
Thing I was going to ask, too, is I guess, I mean, the theory here is we're not... The city, or tell me if I'm wrong. The city's not interested in throwing out all the work they did with Plan Clayton, right? This is really, is the intent of this request to really try to add value to the work that happened there? Or...
Unfortunately, I can't interpret council's request to you. I can just present it to you. And I do have some links at the end of this, so we can go back and look at that. If you'd like to revisit that, you know, council meeting at the 1 hour 30 mark, and we can play it, and then we can all discuss it, if you'd like. But I can't interpret what council is telling you to do. I can't give you a directive. Council gives you the directive.
Yeah. I guess maybe the only thing I would say is that it would be helpful if... And I think that's what you're trying to do here with this outline. But it would be helpful for me if MCD would spend a little bit of time kind of doing a Plan Clayton 101. Because to Kim's point, I mean, that was only done three years ago, and that was not insignificant in terms of the money that was spent on it, the amount of people that, you know, city staff, people like the three of us who, you know, spent time on it. But I have to admit, it would help me to kind of go back and look at it again. Because I... Anyway, so...
Sure, I think that would be good. And I just wanted to say that I think that we do need new housing in this area because it's been so long that there has been new housing, or anything that really we could really point to. And as a real estate agent, I know that this area is highly sought after. People always mention Clayton and Inglewood area when I'm working with people who want to purchase homes. So I think bringing a new, good product is a great thing for the city. And it helps us, maybe our taxes can go down.
We did, you know, note that in Plan Clayton that we believe that more housing is a good thing because, to Kim's point, it could help, you know, lower the spend for everybody. And also, the city, my city needs to grow. I mean, I think we need to grow in the right way, but we need to grow. Because if we don't, then it's... Yeah, I agree. Barb, you asked if we wanted to watch the council meeting. Did... Just, I'm throwing this out there. Can we, Ellen, or can you send that out and a link to everybody? And if everybody, I mean, can we watch it like at our own time?
Yeah, I think, I believe this is one of the links that I sent out. And forgive me if it was not included on the list.
Yeah, could you send it back out? And then, I mean, but it... I know, I mean, is it okay, like, we just watch it on our own, in our own time?
Well, how long, how long is it?
It's maybe five minutes. We just have to pull it up and start it from the 1 hour and 30 mark. I think Steve's trying to get it pulled up.
I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is, but...
Whoa, wait, I do want to say that. I think that's very important. We don't throw the baby out with the bathwater on the Plan Clayton. Sykes, we spend a lot, and in my opinion, we spend a lot of time on it. And I think it is helpful. It's a good reference point. I've seen people... I've seen people, you know, talk out of both sides of mouth, whether they like it or not. Count, I don't want to say anybody in particular, but they're, like, I hear them say, "Okay, well, this is what Plan Clayton says, we should do what Plan Clayton says." And then if it's not what they, "Well, wait a minute, that's just, that's just advisory," you know? And it's like, well, okay, I lean a little more to the advisory side, but it's, it would be incorrect to say that there wasn't a lot of research done with Plan Clayton.
So how, how does what we're talking about doing affect a project like the site up at Sweet Potato Ridge Road?
It, it might not affect that particular property, because that might stay, you know, RSD zoned. But I think it gives us the opportunity to say, "We might develop this property, but we've designated this other property over here as higher density." So when you come in and you say, or we hear an argument that, "Well, when's it going to stop?" Or, "How much is too much?" Or, you know, "We can't support this, X, Y, Z." We got to say, "No, no, no. This is where the development goes, this is where the lower density development goes." And it gives us a, a rational basis for our decision to say, "Yeah, we approve the development at Sweet Potato Road." And I might even say, there's a saying in mediations that when both parties leave unhappy, that means you made the right decision. You got to give and take a little. So if we can give up some land for development in order to designate some land for, that's my thought, is we're, we're horse trading here to see if we can avoid further turmoil.
I've seen some emails from Ellen that have come through about what the council's decision has been made on some of our recent cases. And I'm extremely confused about where some of them stand. When Ellen gets freed up, I'm sure she'll enlighten me. Because some of, some of these have been approved and tabled, and then disapproved and tabled and brought back up again and approved, and it's, it's.
Yeah, it looked like there was an agreement, I mean, it was tabled, and then the next meeting, the tabling was approved from the last meeting, so it was kind of.
Ellen, where, where does the property on Sweet Potato Ridge Road stand?
So it was ultimately approved by council, and then council revoked that approval. So it's like it didn't get approved.
That's where it stands right now?
Correct, that's where it stands today.
So we recommend an approval, and they approve it and disapprove it?
Correct. They approved, they ultimately approved that preliminary plan and rezoning, and then revoked that approval.
But they revoked it at a future meeting, right?
Correct.
Do you have any idea why they revoked it?
I think there was some back and forth about it being approved, and then reconsidered, and then disapproved, and then the referendum, so I, I don't know. I hear the same meetings that you hear from city council, so I can interpret them maybe a little bit differently than you would, but all I have is the words that they had at the city council meetings. There wasn't like a separate work session where they discussed this, or, you know, came up to a unanimous conclusion about what they were going to do moving forward.
Has anything that we've approved in the last 12 to 18 months been approved by council?
Yes, there was a rezoning over on Winger and Hoke, from RSD to CMX.
To what? What was it rezoned to?
RSD rezoned to CMX, or Commercial Mixed Use.
Okay. How about any residential projects that we desperately need?
Hunter's Path Phase 3, or the extension of Hunter's Path, so the 37, I believe, acres-ish to the west of the existing Hunter's Path Phase 1 and 2. They approved that preliminary plan, and Hunter's, or not Hunter's Path, but DDC management is now going for the final plan approval of that.
Is, is that the development that has the easement?
Correct.
On the north end of?
Correct, yes. The 30-foot preservation easement at the northeast.
So it's been approved?
It has not been approved, yet. But it hasn't been disapproved either, so it's still been tabled.
We do a lot of work in our time here, and it doesn't seem to get anywhere.
So we do have the audio from the Clayton City Council meeting where they gave this directive, if you guys would like to at least listen to it, if you want to play it.
This is due in emergency by Mr. Foreman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do we have a roll call, please?
No.
Henning? Foreman? Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachmann?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? Why does this need to be an emergency?
So that we can make the proper notices to the schools, and then, so we can bring the legislation to council for the ticket.
Can I make a motion on the ordinance now? I move for approval.
Motion to approve the ordinance has properly been made by Ms. Foreman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
If we have a roll call, please? Farmer?
No.
Henning? Foreman? Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachmann?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by the 2. Okay, that was it for the ordinances, and now we have a little bit shorter list of resolutions. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution RA 082561, a resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance of applications and issuance of zoning permits and approvals for any new residential housing developments within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
There's been a motion by Mr. Henning to approve the resolution as written. Is there a second? And not hearing a second.
Mr. Mayor, could I offer up an alternative to this one? If I may. I understand, I talked with Mr. Henning, I understand where he's coming from, and I, I understand, you know, residents want to be listened to, and want us to take action appropriately. But before we would do something like a moratorium, I'd like to offer a compromise. It might be a more appropriate solution. Planning Commissioner member Derek Muncie addressed his council, and one thing he mentioned was, was a suggestion that was made to possibly restore some of the residential zoning districts that were eliminated. He said, "We need to figure out how we can begin to resolve the situation, so we aren't having a referendum every six months." I think this would be a good first step in that direction. So instead of halting everything, can we ask Planning Commission to review and consider restoring those districts? That would be a constructive step forward that balances growth with community needs. So can we ask the Planning Commission, the council, to review that and see what they have to say? I make a motion for that, whatever.
Let's go back to Mr. Henning's motion first, and then we'll go to yours.
So I would move to amend a resolution RA 2561 to what Councilman Farmer just said. In regards to what the Planning Committee members stated with restoring residential zoning districts. Are we able to do that here, since it's pretty much a different thing, a moratorium and then just a committee review?
What I would suggest is you can make a motion to refer it to the Planning Commission, which is, I believe, what Mr. Farmer did, have a second for that, and then a vote. And if you get four votes, it would be referred to the Planning Commission for them to review that, and then report back to council. That would be my suggestion.
But that would be separate from the, I mean, from this, from this particular resolution.
From amending the resolution, if Mr. Henning wants to withdraw his motion with that regard.
Withdraw and amend to.
So then, as I understand it, what we have is a motion by Mr. Farmer to refer the matter to the Planning Commission, which I, correct me if I'm wrong, is to give the Planning Commission the authority to consider the restoration of residential zoning districts. And so that's his motion, to send it to the Planning Commission to consider that, and make a recommendation back to council. That would need a second, and then a vote of four to.
When does the Planning Commission meet, Merkstein?
Ellen, what is there? I'll just point you to it. But we would have to advertise it, so it would probably be the September meeting.
Well, that almost covers the time that we wanted, that they want to close it for.
Well, I mean, the timeline of it, I mean, who, what, what's that matter? You know, saying if they get, if they're doing it in September, and then, you know, we're, comes to council in October, is what it is.
We're, we're holding these fellows up, though.
That's, that doesn't affect DDC, no.
Yeah, because we're not putting a moratorium, or it's, we're not, yeah, it doesn't affect. How would that affect, that, that wouldn't affect any, any. Well, what we're referring to, the Planning Commission, is just a review of, of things going forward, so I.
Yeah, just for going forward, this isn't affecting anything.
I'm not saying that, that's what I'm doing here, Ken. We're, so regarding resolution RA 082561, I mean, from what it sounds like, if we have no second, then it's, then that's basically dead. What we're, I believe what we're discussing here is what Councilman Farmer is discussing of sending, of having the Planning Commission review the, you know, that, that rural conservation district. So it's, I mean, it's really something completely different.
Restoration of residential zoning districts, yes.
So the motion has been made by Mr. Farmer, second by Mr. Henning, to amend, or to, to send back to.
To make a referral to the Planning Commission to consider the restoration of residential zoning districts and make a report back to council on that.
Okay, okay. It's been properly motioned and seconded. We have a, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that passes unanimously. I have to say, you know, my own idea on the.
And then we could keep playing it if you wanted to hear what Mayor Stevens was saying, but that was the end of their voting on the matter.
Yeah, if you could send that out, Ellen, that'd be good, because we might want to just, just.
The Plan Clayton website is from the January 13th, 2021, to June 16th, 2021. It was the implementation and consideration of Plan Clayton, so like, the whole process of going through Plan Clayton. That's what that Plan Clayton website is at the very end.
Ellen, I could email you this, too, but just since everybody's together. In terms of the specific residential zoning district, is that, that's the term, RSD, or the, the specific request to the council, could MCD take a look at how that's used in other communities as well? I mean, just.
Sure. I mean, they can evaluate whatever you guys would like them to evaluate. I think they're just looking.
Just as a bit of context, like, you know, kind of, kind of giving us some other examples of other communities in that regard, too. Thank you. So just for the, just for the, Barb, what's the date of the October meeting?
And just for clarification, for residential zoning districts, in our planning and zoning code, there is a set of residential zoning districts, and then a set of non-residential zoning districts.
I will not be here for that meeting on October 27th. I'm sorry, I'll be on a boat somewhere in the middle of the ocean.
We hope you're having a ton of fun there.
I did have two, two thoughts when we were listening to that, though. Kind of like, specific request, maybe I would have to, would be to identify any higher density options to add into the zoning code in potential locations. And then to identify potential lower density options or tools with the specific goal of preserving rural districts, or preserving rural character or feel.
We do have higher densities in like, an RMX district, which would have the residential multi-unit mixed-use density, so that would obviously be higher density in there. And then districts like the suburban conservation district, that has a higher acreage minimum for a lower density as well.
I'm trying to think about where in Clayton, other than the county project, which they may not let go of, in front of Stillwater.
Right.
Where else can you do good-sized development that's not taking up farmland? I know there's one on Old, on Westbrook, Westbrook and Taywood? Yeah. I don't even know what the status of that one is right now, either.
Council rejected that Planning Commission's recommendation for that Westbrook Estates project.
And we were split on that, if I'm not mistaken. There was some hesitation in approving it with the smaller-sized lots.
Correct. It was not a unanimous vote for your recommendation.
Yeah.
So, it passed us, but council rejected.
Council rejected. There's, back to my question. Where is there land that can be developed for a sizable housing development that's not existing farmland?
So when you say existing farmland, do you mean like rural conservation district 2 and 1 districts, or like, large properties that are already zoned as RSD, or residential single-unit district?
What was the Sweet Potato Ridge?
It was zoned RSD.
Okay.
And it also had the Clayton Improvement District, number one overlay on top of it, which required it to go to a planned development district. But then Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, the condition was that they meet those RSD standards, and so they, they did.
Okay. I just, I struggled to see where else things will happen here for any housing at all, and it needs to happen. But the people that want to keep it rural have, have a good, a big voice, and they're heard at council meetings and Planning Commission meetings. The area, Clayton, needs more residential development, for sure. Just struggling to see how it's ever going to happen. And if it doesn't happen, like you're saying, if there's not new housing and new tax base, then Clayton will continue, will get old, be an old city that goes nowhere, and won't be a great place to live. And, or have, who knows what will happen with Northmont Schools and their tax base? Taxes will probably go up.
I think, so I guess for, I guess, any other, David, Derek, Kim, anything?
Excuse me, one question. It's been a minute, so you all, please forgive my memory. But in this plan, we did consider schools, right? The student-teacher ratio, was that, was it broken down that far, or not?
For Plan Clayton, when that was considered?
Yes.
Yes, all aspects were considered. So anywhere from school districts to jurisdictional boundaries, and then even beyond. So all of Northmont City School District was considered, not just those portions which are within the city of Clayton.
Well, I guess my, specifically, because some of the argument when these new developments come is that it's going to put stress on the, the schools, in particular, the teacher-student ratio. So you're saying that that was included also in?
I don't know that those discussions verbatim were had during Plan Clayton, but I know that Plan Clayton, when they hired the consulting firm that they used, it was, I believe it was the Urban Collective, they looked at all aspects. So from a, a civil engineering aspect, so they considered all aspects of the property and how it would affect every person's life.
So Derek, and. So Derek and, Dan, you remember?
I, I think we talked about schools in every single development, and I think, I think that was a survey or some data research was done on, on that during Plan Clayton. You know, one common theme that continuously gets repeated is no development north of forty, which I think is kind of arbitrary when we look at how Union has developed and how Inglewood has developed and the obvious gaps in development north of forty. There's plenty of gaps south of forty, you know. I think, you know, my, my goal in proposing this was to try to find a compromise between these two, or I guess, anyone who wants development, which seems to be us, some of the councilmen, some of the people I talk to, you know, regularly, and then the keep-it-rural group. So if we can find a way to bring people to the table and say, okay, you know, we might put some, and, and it might not, it might yield absolutely nothing, but then at least we can say, hey, we tried everything to, to get some resolution on paper here. If you guys want to fight every single development that comes through, you say you don't, but I think you do. And now we might have another tool in our toolbox to say, okay, no, we're done here. This, this property gets developed, this property doesn't get developed, you know, something like that, or it's going to be developed how you want it. You know, I mean, the, I think I first proposed it in a long-winded coun, council remark, you know, back when it was at the vote for the Sweet Potato development. I was pretty vocal and I've spoken about why we needed that one in particular, and that's, I think, where this idea started was like, yeah, sure, we might not want, I, I think the remarks from that developer really started, maybe even changed my mind or like, put some ideas in my head as to why, even additional ideas as to why we need development. You know, the taxes and the schools, but we need to develop in a way that doesn't burden the, you know, utilities. If we keep going further out and doing these smaller clusters in areas where there's not enough people or enough opposition to challenge it, that might not be the best thing for us, because now we got to run additional mileage of sewer line and water line and electric line, and that adds, you know, maybe a hot, a hotbed for more activity somewhere else. Now, police and fire have to go further. So if we can find ways to concentrate the development, that's the only way to preserve. If you, if you want to preserve rural ground, we'll show, let the experts tell us how to do it. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, if there was a third thing or maybe like asterisks to put, like, you know, what tools does, does a city have to maybe preserve? What considerations should be put into whether or not development's a good thing? And then, you know, we have that criteria, then to go walk down when there's ninety people in here, you know, saying, we don't want this, we don't want this, it's not good for the schools, it's not good for this, not good for this. And so, well, wait a minute, everyone agrees it's good for X, Y, Z, or we can say, okay, we were told by professionals who do this, you know, that, you know, if this is some, if this is an area we want to preserve, this is a good area to preserve.
And, and council does have the ability to form a special committee or a special group to, you know, do functions like that, if the commission's pleasure is to include that in the report to council.
You're suggesting maybe small focus groups? Is that what you're?
I'm just saying that the city of Ca, or the city of Clayton's city council has the ability to, you know, create small groups, like for the Plan Clayton, they were in charge of directing that group to be formed, and so they could form another group full, full of, you know, experts or call on a specific firm to create a report for city council to be presented to them.
Well, and this is, I think, Ev, Kim, and David and Derek kind of have said this maybe in a couple of different ways, but, and I remember when Derek spoke at the council meeting about the Sweet Potato Ridge project and, and actually, at that, I think it was that meeting where you talked about, I mean, you kind of did some numbers on revenue, you know, for property taxes to the city and around that project. And I guess, has the city ever done that where we've said, hey, if we add, I'm, I'm just spitballing here, if we add fifteen hundred new homes, you know, and just, and you, of course, you know, you'd have to kind of estimate what the value of, the taxable value of that is, here's the revenue that that's going to kick off so that, to Kim's point, we don't have to go back for an income tax ballot, you know, income tax levy. Like, have we ever done that, do you think?
I think Kevin would be in charge of that, our finance director, and he would probably lean heavily on the auditor's office to come up with those assumptions, but it's, it's kind of a roll of the dice. You don't want to estimate those things and be wrong. So a lot of people don't want to tie their names to those estimations or, you know, say, you're going to get this X amount of dollars if you do this X amount of homes. There's a lot of other factors that go into whether or not a home can be valued like that or sold like that or even built, just depending on the developer, the builder, the city, there's a lot of different factors in there.
It, it just seems like without some estimate of that from a finance professional, that people are just speculating about what's going to happen with more real estate, more taxes and that kind of thing. So something's better than nothing.
Yep, I agree.
Could you put that request to Kevin and tell him we?
Absolutely, I would be happy to.
All right. To add on to that, do we have an average that a taxpayer pays in income tax in the city of Clayton? Like, is that a, I'm sure that's an easy number to find. I don't know if the, if the average or maybe the median, yeah. So, you know, we add two hundred more residents, here's the additional tax revenue that that'll yield.
Correct, and it, it depends on, for the income tax, where they work to get that income tax, and then property taxes would be, you know, obviously their home values and their land values.
I think we would probably do it conservatively and assume that they work in a higher-tax city, but, I mean, I, I think that would still yield a number that would probably shock some people.
I would be happy to make that request.
You blame it on me, tell Kevin.
You've got it.
We have two other, actually, I wanted to, actually, why don't we do the, the old business, and then if Mrs. Bustos wants to make a comment, you can, we'll do that at the end, if that's okay? So I think Barb, is it the August minutes, right, that were sent out, right?
You have the minute meeting, minute meeting, meeting minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. And then, Ms. Bustos, would you like to come on up and talk? Sure. Remind us of your name and address, if you could, just for the record.
Can we just do open for public comment?
Oh, sure.
Motion.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to open for public comment?
Moved open for public comment.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I did want to, this wasn't on my list until you guys started having the conversation, but I did think I would mention it. A lot of the reason that the finance part of the conversation never happens at city council is because all the developers keep coming and asking for these TIFs, and then everybody gets all worked up about, you know, that's not money going into the city for thirty years. So just, just mentioning that out there, that it comes up at every single meeting, so. But back to the changes to the potential for residential zoning. I've been going to a lot of council meetings, I listen to a lot of the developments, some of them make really good sense, some of them don't. And I think that part of the issue is, it seems like the ones that get all of the split decisions and conversation and everything have three things in common, the density, the traffic, and the water. Those are the big issues that usually come up on all of them. And when you look at roads that are just one, one-way, each-way, big ditches, no shoulders, and you want to put a division that spills all out onto that little road, you're going to get a lot of complaints from residents, and it seems like we need to be looking at some of those things when we're looking at the zoning. So, for instance, if you've got a development like that and you can put it out onto, let's say, forty, okay, now, I know that's more difficult because it's a state road, but it's also a bigger road and has lights and, you know what I mean, it's easier to maintain. You'd probably get a lot less pushback from the residents who aren't going to put it out onto a little road or out onto Sweet Potato or one of those roads. And I was thinking, you know, as you go back and look at these things, maybe when you're looking for those missing holes to put in developments, look at the roads there, look at, do they have city water or they have wells? Because when you get out in the rural area, you're going to have a lot more wells, and of course, everybody who has a well gets all concerned that, you know, digging's going to disrupt it and runoff's going to disrupt it and all these other things. And so it's, it seems like perhaps the, the codes, when they're revised, could kind of match the areas a little better if you've got Wenger Road and it's all, all that stuff is already handled and you've got plenty of road and you've got plenty of water and everything. It seems like it would be a lot easier of an issue to get those things approved. And then the density, those houses with the five-inch, the five-foot side yards, I mean, they're just so tiny, those lots. I mean, I, I couldn't even find in the code where that was allowed, but I know it is allowed because it's been to the meetings, but five feet, I mean, that's really cramming those houses in there together. And, and I, I feel like, you know, you, if, if you put three divisions forward and you maybe say ten feet, you know, that, because I thought that's what R S D was, was ten feet. You know, you might, we might be able to get some things actually accomplished, and I think that the, the developers, they, they buy a piece of land and they assume they're going to get to do what they want. And so the density gets smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, and I'm sure there are good places for that, but there's also not good places for it. And so I just feel like if we could be a little more cognizant of the surroundings for these places, it might bring in a whole lot less aggravation and people fighting about it, and, I mean, there's a development that's trying to get in across the street from me. They've got the five foot between the houses. It's like, oh, come on, they're so tight. You know, why can't it be just normal residential? And maybe we only get fifty houses in instead of fifty-five, but nobody complains about it. You know, and, and just some things like that, or maybe they move the entrance to forty and off a haber. You know, just some kind of practical sense things instead of, no, it has to be this way, and then everybody's all worked up about it, and, you know, it's just like, okay, let's find a way to bring some more houses in, but also find a way to not overburden the existing areas. So, I mean, because we have some really nice areas. We've got that beautiful area behind Esther Price that it's all ready to go, it's just not developed, and there's a beautiful area, I drove over and looked at it by Northmont, it was like called like Blue Teal or something like that, but the houses were beautiful. And it's like, okay, could we, why don't we try to do things like that where the residents could get behind it and get excited instead of it always being a, an argument, so. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be here and for your comments, Ms. Bustos. Thank you.
I would like to kind of respond just to a couple of points. You know, I think, Ellen, the TIFs don't affect the income tax, right? There's no impact on the income tax for a TIF.
From my understanding, it's the developer who is out and the developer who has made hole from some of those property taxes.
But just the property taxes, not the income tax the city receives?
Correct.
So that money goes straight into the city's pocket regardless of whether it's a TIF or not?
Correct, and they have to have a developer's agreement to get that money out of that fund.
It's been clarified at council meetings repeatedly that the school district gets paid before the developer gets paid from the property taxes.
Correct.
Do you know what percentage of our property taxes actually go to the city?
It's very little.
Very little, so we're, so the city's actually losing out a very little money when a TIF is approved.
But I understand they don't lose out at all.
The county's losing out a little money, yeah.
Correct.
But, but it's really the county who's losing out on the money.
Yes, there is a, a work session, yes, it'll be at six-thirty at the next council meeting, and there'll be a, a presentation for TIFs, for people to, you know, gain some of that knowledge or understanding or at least see what that looks like.
Is that this Thursday?
October second, so it'll be the first Thursday.
And then, I, I do want to, in particular, we talked about traffic. County engineer has to approve any entrances, exits, roads, where the road can be located, that's all county approval, and every single plan gets approval or has to be sent to the county engineer before it comes to us.
Correct, it's evaluated by the developer's engineer, they decide, okay, this is a good place for an entrance on a road, we would have to do these sort of modifications to the road to handle this development here, and then the city has their own engineer who looks at it as well. The city has, you know, engineering standards as it relates to traffic and turns and entrances and exits and things, and then depending on who owns the road, so if State Route forty, per se, if that's a, a county road, they would have to also approve that. And we always get, or try to get, you know, input from ODOT for some of those projects as well.
So that, you know, I think that, that's not discussed by, it hasn't been discussed by any, this is just my, I watch every single council meeting, I got to admit, I'm kind of boring, I follow this closely, I take a little bit of responsibility for this meeting, that's why I rushed here, that I, I have, this has become a very important issue for me, and these issues are repeated every single development. It's not the ones that, that get a lot of flack, it's every single development, it's water, density, traffic. I've built here, I've dug here, I know there's a water problem, you're going to get a water problem no matter what you do, whether you do develop or you don't develop. In my opinion, more development will, will spawn, one, more resources to deal with the water, but two, also disturbing the clay helps the water flow. I just, I've done it at my house. The, the developers come in with a plan, so I think that, that should, I just want to put that out there, because we're volunteers, we sit up here and we hear the same arguments over and over and over and over and over. No one's ever presented a, a plan as it relates to the water, it's just, I got water in my backyard, what are we going to do about it? I, I'm curious, too, because we got a development plan in front of us that tells us exactly where the water's going to go, and if it doesn't go there, then we can sue them, or somebody can sue them. Same thing with the traffic, if the county engineers are wrong, there's a negligence issue on our hands. But for the density, too, it's not five feet between the houses, it's five-feet setbacks, five-feet side yard setbacks, that means ten feet between the houses. And we can go with a measuring stick and walk around some of these older neighborhoods in Clayton, and you'll find that there's ten feet between the houses. So, so I think that, and here's another point, on the Sweet Potato Road property in particular, I pushed the issue for the developer to meet R S D standards, and it still is, was rejected by city council ultimately, because it would have lost a referendum. Why the procedure took place, I don't know, but it would have either lost at the referendum or city council would have rejected it, even meeting the R S D requirements. So it's, in my opinion, it's not, I'm glad Mr. Farmer recommended that we do this, because for what he and I disagree on as it relates to what development should and shouldn't be approved, I think we agree, we don't want to keep fighting over it. So I thank him for that, but at the same time, we've had these arguments since my first vote on city council, or not city council, Planning Commission, since before, because it started with the Redwood, and it's every single argument, every single time, something's got to give. And I think one of the big things is educating people on what the standards are, what we're allowed to do, where the money goes, and ultimately, it might even be the litigation that really starts to push people one way or the other, and that's what I'd like to prevent, because I am surprised we haven't been sued yet. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
I guess one of the other things that comes to my mind in reviewing where the zoning, different zoning areas are, have to do with roads. I don't know if City of Clayton has anything master plan for road development, or not?
They do, we use the Montgomery County thoroughfare plan, and it has like a projected, you know, what they want to do out into the future, 10, 15, 20, 25, 50 years out, and then City of Clayton just approved their own thoroughfare plan to kind of add to that, and benefit the city of Clayton specifically, instead of just a master county plan that benefits the county as a whole, it was more specific to Clayton.
So, so does that, do those plans help with concerns about traffic?
Correct, they have to meet the thoroughfare plans. So, those future indicators, or future desires that council approved, that they wanted, you know, walkability in this area, or travel in this area, they have to meet those standards. When a developer comes in, they know about those standards that are in there, and they meet them. So, they put sidewalks in the right spots, they put walking paths in the right spots, they widen in the right spots, they, they do what they're supposed to do to help facilitate that thoroughfare plan.
That sounds like that's within the, within the development, but if it's emptying out onto Hoke Road, or Sweet Potato Ridge, who's, who's, who's improved, making improvements on those roads?
So, for some developments, like the, for the Northwood Estates one, they put in the multi-use path, and then they dedicate that right-of-way to the city, so it ultimately belongs to the city, but they make those improvements before they dedicate it. And if they don't own like a right-of-way parcel out there, if they don't own to the center line there, they can't dedicate it to the city, but they can certainly help with areas that are outside of their site. So, with the Westbrook Estates one, they were willing to help with some water that was off-site of their, of their property, and then the Northwood Estates one, they were required, or, you know, one of the conditions for approval was to put forth that amount of money in the same percentage as they would increase trips at the intersection there. So, they would help with any sort of problem off-site.
Do you know if the cities ever, city engineers ever talked about working with the TID board?
I'm not familiar with a TID board.
Transportation Improvement District, they're the ones that work directly with Union, the city of Union, and all the development around the airport, and helping them get those roads built, the utilities, in a very timely manner, faster than what typically the county engineer, or the city engineers do, which is why John Applegate has used the TID board to help develop that whole area.
I think that's a great resource, I would have to ask Randy, this is kind of his, his world is the traffic world, so I'm sure he's aware of it, and likely works with him, but I can't say for 100% that he does or does not.
I'm on that board, I had not heard of anything with the city of Clayton.
Okay, that would be great.
Coming up at all, so.
I'm going to make a note for Randy, too. I'll make a note for Randy, too.
All right, any, any further business? Kim? You good? You good, David?
No.
Okay. All right, Derek, you good? Okay, so we'll go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Oh, we did him, yeah.
Aye.
So, David moved, or David motioned, did you?
Second.
Okay, second, okay. Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, thank you.